Is the reopening of the July 28, 2020 special town meeting warrant. So discussion approval of the articles. And as part of that, we have, we have a couple of different things going on. We have a suggestion for amending the electronic delivery warrant article and also a possibility of altering the prudent investor article as well. And Hillary, my apologies, did we have, we don't have agenda notes for this meeting, right?
That's correct, you do not.
Okay, good, okay. So just want to make sure I'm not going off the prescribed order. So since the, I think the electronic warrant delivery article, we're a little more familiar with the proposed changes because they came out of the last town meeting. Mike Zulis, would you be able to walk us through? And did everyone, oh, you're frozen. I should ask, did everyone get the files, the new versions of these? Okay, or proposals? Thank you.
Do you want to motion to reopen the warrant?
Oh gee whiz, thank you.
I'll move to reopen the July 28, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor? Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulis?
Yes.
So would you mind walking us through your proposal?
Yes. So this is a follow-up to the discussion that we had last night. And the effort here, and if you, if the effort here in the document that's been distributed is to respond to the issue of access that was raised in town meeting. And it gives the opportunity for any resident, in addition to the other opportunities, to get access to the warrant through online and from the senior center, from the select board, and from the public library, gives an additional opportunity for residents to get paper copies of the warrant by submitting a written request to the town minister.
We had a preliminary discussion, but I think we would want to entertain a motion at the moment if someone has one or I can suggest one, and then we could have a further discussion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just have one question, Mr. Zulis.
Of course.
Michael, just in attempts to gain success in this, did you by any chance have any conversation with any of the town meeting members that addressed this that night? Actually, I know Joe wrote to us.
Yeah, I did not. I just thought of it yesterday, so I haven't had the chance to reach out. And since there were a few problems with this, whether it be you know, Diane Exteeno or Brian Walsh, and so I wasn't sure there was one contact point. So I thought it's better just to, you know, address the concept. But, but no, no, I haven't spoken without this language.
Okay. I'm fine, Madam Chair. If you want to, if you want to form a motion, I'll be glad to enter it into the record.
Oh, would you like to make the motion?
I was just gonna say, I would, I would move to include in the warrant, the electronic delivery warrant, the electronic delivery article as amended.
That's second level.
Any further discussion? Mr. Doyle?
Yes. A question for Michael, if I may, in the first paragraph, Michael. Second line from the bottom where it starts "and" to remove.
I'm sorry, I just got in front of me, Arthur, could you?
Okay. Your first paragraph
Yep.
of the article.
Yep.
The second line from the bottom, Michael.
Yep.
Where it reads "and" to remove.
Yep.
Because it is inserted above unless requested in writing, et cetera. Does that need, and this is the question to have the word otherwise inserted so that it reads "and" to otherwise remove?
That, that sounds like a great add to me, but I think, I'm not sure if Kevin Freitag's on, and so I would, it sounds like a great add to me, but I would defer to Kevin.
Yes, good morning, everyone. Mr. Doyle, regarding that question, I think it's important to point out that we're talking about two different types of warrants here. We're talking about the warrants for town meeting and also the warrants for elections. That second section of the article that you're referring to deals with let me just read this again.
I wasn't clear on that either, Kevin. I read it both ways.
Yeah. Let me just read this one more time. All right, so actually, in the article where it says "and to remove the obligation of the warrant committee to report on ballot questions", that report on ballot questions is actually a holdover from quite some time ago when the warrant committee would report on ballot questions. That is actually not permitted by law any longer. So what, what that section of the article does is it says not only does the warrant committee no longer have an obligation to report on ballot questions, they have no obligation to deliver that report to the dwelling houses in the town. That comes completely, that comes completely out of the bylaw.
If I may, I think though, Kevin, that Arthur was suggesting in the second line from the bottom of that first paragraph of the article, saying to otherwise, or to otherwise remove the obligation to deliver, oh, that's, oh, that's, that refers back to the reports, yes, okay.
That's right, that's right.
It was ambiguous as to which reports when I read it.
Yep, got it.
And just to be clear, the revisions that are being proposed here are such that a resident can ask that a paper copy of the warrant for a town meeting be delivered or be mailed to them. There's nothing in here regarding election warrants, which is, which can be separate if there's a, you know, a special election that is not, not going to take place along with a special town meeting. So there isn't sort of a parallel here with regards to election warrants. The only provision here regarding having warrants mailed to you is in regard to warrants for town meetings or special town meetings, just to be clear on that.
And if I, if I may? I think, I think the rationale for the distinction is on the election warrants, there is in the currently drafted bylaw, no provision for paper copies. Whereas there is a provision for paper copies to town meeting, of the warrants, as opposed to the election warrants. For the town meeting warrants, there is a provision for paper copies to town meeting members, warrant committee members, town officials. And so this, this gives residents that opportunity as well. On the election warrants, there isn't any longer any paper copies being delivered to anyone, but only that they would be available.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Zulis. Ms. Collins, yes. Thank you. So the, the second change, well, actually, I should say, before we go on to the second change, that was not in, in the warrant. So we've just not only changed the article, but have we, did we actually vote to insert it in the warrant? I think that requires a second vote.
I think the motion I made, and Hillary include in the warrant, the article as amended. I think that's the motion.
Is that correct? Okay.
I agree. I think you're, I think you're correct, Michael.
I just want to leave no stone unturned, and I, yes, I want to make sure that we got it right. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, so the, the second article and, let's see, I, I don't see Jim McCallum, he did have a possible other meeting, but Mr. Freitag can help walk us through the prudent investor rule. There's been a development, oh, there's Mr. McCallum. With Cohasset having successfully passed or, and had adopted by the general court. But slightly different than the one that we're proposing here. So, Mr. Freitag.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So right now, we have a prudent investor article in the warrant. And what that does is rather than limit the town treasurer to investments that are on the legal list of investments, which are a list that's provided in the general laws, it allows the treasurer to have greater flexibility in terms of investing in accordance with what it commonly referred to as the prudent investor rule. That's a rule that's outlined in chapter 203(c) of the general laws. That's the way that our article is drafted. A year ago, when we discussed this article, potential article, for the first time, there was some thought that perhaps as an additional restriction on investments, that there be mention of the Town of Milton's investment policy. Contacted the Division of Local Services, spoke with their attorneys about that type of a restriction, and was told pretty clearly that that wasn't permissible. Fast forward to late January of this year, Cohasset was able to pass special legislation, which is, which was enacted by the governor, that does in fact include mention in reference to the Town of Cohasset's investment policy. And that being the case, I thought that it was prudent to come back to this board with an alternative to the prudent investor article as currently included in the warrant that would now reference the investment policy of, of the select board of Milton. And the way that I sort of explained this the other night is, you know, you have, right now, under the general laws, you sort of have a circle, if you will, and within that circle are investments that the town treasurer can make. That circle is drawn around the legal list of investments. The prudent investor rule would draw another circle that may be larger than the current circle of investments, although it could possibly be smaller depending on sort of how those, how the investments on that legal list are viewed by the treasurer. The addition of language regarding the investment policy would draw, would create a third circle, if you will, which could be smaller than the prudent investor rule. For instance, it might limit investments to only, you know, I don't know, companies or funds that are related to renewable energy or something like that, that might be smaller than the group of investments that would be considered viable under the prudent investor rule, but would not be permissible under the investment policy of the town, which is amended by the select board from time to time. So I think that describes that the two different articles you have in front of you are, and propose recommendations are, the article as is currently drafted, and then the article as it might be revised to reflect reference to the investment policy of the Town of Milton.
Thank you. And, and thank you, our treasurer, Jim McCallum, has joined us. So Mr. McCallum, if you could talk to us about how you see these two different versions of the warrant article that we've done. Okay, it says that, that we can talk, but I don't hear anything.
Mr. Treasurer, you're unmuted. Do you have a microphone?
Mike, then hey, could you text Jim? Do you have working call or something? It is important.
Jim? Okay, dial in through the phone number. Thank you. He's dialing in through the phone number.
I don't know if anyone on the board has had a chance to look through the investment policy, but a lot of it is statutory. The legal list is included in it, and it's very general, doesn't really go into a large detail about asset allocation or anything. And to my knowledge, it's not embedded in our financial policy. As I, if I, if I read the original policy that we're still working under, it did not look as if that had been voted on as part of those policies. But as our attorney from Freitag said, that can change at any time, the board, subsequent boards, this board can make those changes. Those are our considerations. Yes, Mr. Zulis?
Did the investment, I mean, the finance subcommittee have a view on including the investment policy or not, or?
Well, since, that's a very difficult, we can't really talk because Ms. Conlin and I really make a quorum, but as far as procedurally for this, her suggestion was that perhaps we would like to pull the article and really delve into this a little more. So that, that was, that was one of, one thought she had procedurally that we could follow, but she also, I believe, said that she will be happy to support the remainder of the board that's here with whatever decision. Do we have Mr. McCallum now? I do have a discussion with him, but that was yesterday.
He was dialing back in and then.
Oh.
Hello.
Hello, Jim. Thank you.
How you doing?
Thank you for joining us. Perhaps you could?
Unlink from his computer, sorry, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Turn your computer off, yeah.
Yep, okay. You know, reading both of them, as long as you can get it through, if it worked with Cohasset, as long as including accordance with the Town of Milton investment policy, either way is fine with me. I'd expect the board of select to change the investment policy if it goes through, even to narrow the options down a little bit.
Well, thank you. That's hopeful to know how you're thinking about this. I have a question about doing this. And I would not say that we had a robust debate about this, the first time it was presented in a town meeting, and that they're making no judgment, but there's a concern behind that because we were asked to take this back, and a few people advocated for the full prudent investor rule expansion all the, all the way to the margins. And by, by doing this, are we circumventing the spirit of, of that request? I'm not sure that that's true, but it's a question that I pose for people's consideration.
Yeah, I think with, with the way it's written with the Town Investment Policy, I mean, then it's open to debate. Once, once the article passes, then the town can decide which way it wants to go with it. It gives you that option. The other, the other option is the full prudent investor rule, and you have to put it in the investment policy anyway, and could you put fences around it then?
So I'm not clear. I mean, Jim, you, you've been our treasurer for a while, and so you developed that investment policy. So I'm not sure about whose role it is, and if the, you know, if the select board's now adopting investment policy, does that mean the board is responsible for, for part of what really is under your review? I, 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 I am a little hesitant about stepping into somebody else's role, and perhaps, I mean, you can weigh in on that, but if maybe Kevin Freitag could, he had talked about that, maybe he could give us a little?
Well, I know a lot of, a lot of towns, I know like the Hamptons, and they're a little bit more in the liberal slant, but they have, they prohibit investing in oil companies and tobacco companies and things like that. I mean, is that something, I mean, the town could go in that direction in an investment policy if they wanted to. You know, it leaves the door open to prohibit things that you don't want to invest in.
Thank you. Mr. Zulis?
It seems to me that if we include the, the investment policy, it does give the select board a prerogative or a check on both the prudent investor rule and on the treasurer. That's, that's the question. Does the select board want to have a check through an investment policy, both on the prudent investor rule, otherwise couldn't expand it, it seems to me, because you'd have to be within it at least. An investment policy could further limit the prudent investor rule, and also, could also limit the treasurer. So, so that to me is the question, whether the select board wants that, and the town wants the select board to have that prerogative or that check in this area.
And I think for, for those reasons, I think that was Ms. Conlin's, that the root of Ms. Conlin's suggestion that we may want to consider pulling it, if that's really a direction that we wanted to go in. I'm not sure that that's necessary. Mr. Wells, did you want to say something?
Sorry, Madam, sorry, Madam Chair. No, I'm with Mr. Zulis. I'm ready to, to move this forward. I think this is too important. I think I'm ready to go if he is.
Yes, Mr. Zulis?
Yeah, let me, let me, I'll tell you, my view on this is, I think it's important to move forward on. I don't necessarily need the need for the select board to have a check or a prerogative either on the prudent investor rule or on the treasurer's. So in my view, I don't, I don't see it as necessary. I'm open to argument the other way certainly, but I don't see the need for that check. And so I would, I would support the first one without the need for the investment policy.
Mr. Doyle, would you like to go ahead?
I'd just say that I support what Michael put forward. I think the opportunity for the select board to serve as a check is in the community's public interest.
Okay, if I understand this, you're saying that you favor the, the one that puts the investment policy in place? Mr. Doyle, you are muted. Oh, you're still muted, Mr. Doyle.
There we go, thank you. No, I would go with the proposed additions to the Milton investment policy that we're entertaining.
Well, would someone like to make a motion? Well, let me just give you my view. My, I'm, I put the same line as you, is that that it's preferable to put forward the article without the investment policy for some of the reasons that we've been talking about, that it can lead for the select board to to interject itself in the treasurer's work. And that, that could also lead to So I, if someone would like to form a motion just so we can move, that would be great.
So with all due respect, the article that we all make a motion to include in the warrant, the article as drafted and has been in the warrant.
I'll second.
All those in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes. Thank you. So now we have 10 articles and I see, I noted that in the, in the warrant, it's the old order, but you do have a note that you will change it. So now we have 10 articles, and we agreed last night that the ordering would be for the Milton Village articles to be the first four. And then the EPA would be next. And I don't know if everybody has, has the agenda in front of them, so I'll just read it off quickly. The F is amend zoning bylaws, provision of affordable housing. And then G, the next is home rule petition for prudent investor. H is the carryover and expenditure local option. I is the 20 mile an hour safety zones, and J is electronic warrant delivery. Would anybody like to propose a change to this, or are we happy, happy with the order? Yes, Mr. Zulis, you're, you're muted.
I think the, I think the order we had last night was a little bit different.
You're right.
Let me just check. I think the order that we had last night had, yeah, here it is, it had electronic delivery after, had, it had the first four for East Milton, I mean, sorry, Milton Village, five CPA, six, the affordable housing, seven, the prudent investor, eight was electronic delivery warrant, and then nine was carryover expenditure, and then 10 was the 20 mile. And I'm actually more comfortable with that, the one that we discussed last night.
I, I, I agree. So does anyone else want to make a motion to change it, or shall we keep it as reported last night? Hearing no call, then we will not do that. We'll keep it as we voted last night.
Madam Chair, if I may, can you clarify which order that was? Is that the order as it currently appears?
No, it's not in the warrant. And when I, I opened it just a little, sorry. The order in the warrant right now that I just received starts out with home rule petition, prudent investor rule. So, and then, and there are only nine. So that, that looked like the most recent one that I, I have. But perhaps you would like to pull up what you have, so we're all looking at the same thing. Yes, Mr. Zulis?
I may, I think, Hillary, I think we did have a version last night that we received that had the one that I just, I just read. It was the draft index that we, we voted on last night, Hillary. That's the one that, that Melinda and I were just referencing.
Okay, I want to make sure I pull up the right one. As, as Katie mentioned last night, I've had about a dozen of these.
There's a surfeit of incoming now.
That's it.
Right. That's great. Thank you. Okay. Appreciate everybody taking the time to make sure this is right. Because now we're, we're to the critical step of closing and approving. the town meeting warrant. Actually, I will entertain a motion to close the July 28, 2020 special town meeting warrant.
So moved, so moved. A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Wells?
Yes.
Collins, yes. Excellent. The July 28, 2020 special town meeting warrant, reading an index page. But because we had the change of officers, do we need to approve that again? I think we approved it subject to those changes, so. That's correct. Okay, looks like it. So, we don't need to do number five, because we did that last night. Number six, approval of the July 28, 2020 special town meeting warrant, subject to the changes that we just discussed. And also then, ordering of the articles within, to match the index.
So moved.
A second.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Mr. Freitag?
Yes, if I may, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm just rereading the electronic delivery of warrants article again. And I'm sorry to hold up the board here, but I just want to make sure that the intent of the board is expressed in the drafting of the article. The change that you looked at, where it said unless requested in writing, upon further review, it appears to me that that follows the list of town meeting warrants, election warrants, and warrant committee reports. And so that seems to suggest that, as it's currently been revised, that a vote could be made by town meeting to amend the bylaws such that paper copies of any of those three things, the town meeting warrants, the election warrants, and warrant committee reports could be mailed upon request to a resident. And I know that that does not appear to be, at least from my understanding, the intent of the board. The board's intent, as I understand it, is simply that town meeting warrants and warrant committee reports could be requested to be mailed to residents.
So before, right. Before we go on, do we need to reopen the warrant to discuss this?
Potentially, yes.
Okay, so would somebody please move to reopen the warrant?
So I'll make a motion to reopen the warrant.
Second?
A second.
All those in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Wells?
Yes.
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 Collins, yes. Okay. So, I actually realized that I had a question about that and got caught up in sharing. So, I thought that that's why the recommendation was written slightly different than the article. And so, the recommendation looked like it referred only to requests for paper copies for warrants, but not for election warrants. Did I read that incorrectly then?
No, that is, that is correct. But in terms of the potential for a motion to amend the recommendation at town meeting, as the article's currently drafted, I believe a motion could be made to revise the recommendation, which, as written, the recommendation is narrower than the article. But at town meeting, a motion could be made by a town meeting member to request that election warrants also be mailed upon request. So, as currently written, the recommendation would just be to mail the warrants, but that potential motion to amend is out there.
Mr. Zulus?
Kevin, could we correct it? Let me just get it in front of me. Can we, could we correct it? And this is just the article. It's the issue, not the recommendation, right?
Correct.
Because that added unless requested in writing. So, one way to fix it is after town meeting warrants, you could put a parenthetical. So, to see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws to provide for the electronic delivery of town meeting warrants, parentheses, unless requested in writing, close parentheses, election warrants, and warrant committee reports.
That would work from a from a legal sense, it would work.
You see what I'm suggesting, Kevin?
I do. I'm just thinking through it and wondering if that also, first, if that's specific enough, and if it also applies to or should be made to apply to warrant committee reports.
That's not the, I don't think, that's not the intention.
Okay. So, the proposed revision is that essentially after town meeting warrants in the article, it would say unless requested in writing, maybe just comma, unless requested in writing, comma, and then election warrants and warrant committee? Or do you want, you thought parenthetical is more appropriate way to list that?
I thought a parenthetical makes it tighter and more direct. And then the question, I mean, and then I think the alternative is just to not even include it. Because you're providing for the electronic delivery. Down in the recommendation, you're talking about the implications, right? Which includes requesting them, paper copies. We don't say in the article that we're providing paper copies. But that's
Correct.
And so, it could be dealt with the same way. Don't not even include unless requested in writing in the article, because that is just a, the operational outflow of what the article provides. Excuse me, you could take that, I mean, we could. So, in my view, we could either take it out altogether or make it a parenthetical next to town meeting warrants.
That's the recommendation. All right, so I think that that perhaps will work then. A parenthetical inserted after town meeting warrants, I'm just going to make that change here in my copy, which I will email to the board. I'll make a similar revision to the proposed recommendation for the warrant committee to consider in the first paragraph of the recommendation. So, as opposed to listing unless requested in writing, after that list, there'll be a similar parenthetical after town meeting warrants. And then the rest of the recommendation will go forward as, as you've seen it today, which I think is specific enough and follows the intent of the board.
Oh, you're muted, Mr. Zulus?
I don't want to get into an arcane discussion of this, and I apologize. But it's really not unless requested in writing, because requesting in writing doesn't preclude the electronic delivery. It's additive. So if we, I mean, if you could read it that we're providing for electronic delivery, unless requested in writing, that's not the case. There's still electronic delivery.
So, it would be an and. Copy if requested in writing. I feel as if we're running into the same difficulties we did during town meeting, trying to maybe do this quickly. So, the other option you said was to leave it out and then let the recommendation stand as prescribing the procedure?
Well, I think that works, but I don't know if Kevin does, may not. You know, I defer to Kevin on that. But I, but I just wonder if, you know, I wonder if we just don't even put in that unless requested in writing. And that's a, that's an aspect of how it's going to be operated. You don't talk about putting copies in the mail to town meeting members in the article itself. It's just part of the recommendation. So that request in writing, it seems to me, could probably be made part of the recommendation and not included in the warrant on that same theory.
Okay, so to get even more complicated, let me just suggest this, I don't know if it would work. But to, instead of, I know it's lovely to have that string of nouns there, town meeting warrants, election warrants, and warrant committee reports. But perhaps we need to separate them by the semicolon and just say, provide for electronic delivery of town meeting warrants and paper copies of whatever it is, the legal term, such upon written request, semicolon, electronic delivery of election warrants, and and then, you know, and the warrant committee reports. Just a thought. And it's, I mean, printed copies go to all dwelling houses, right? And that's Arthur's suggestion to begin with? Oh.
Yep.
No, so. It's not as if anyone gets skipped over.
Maybe the best way to do it is just to leave the article alone.
Yes, Mr. Doyle?
Would it be feasible at this time to follow Mike's recommendation to drop it? And between now and the July meeting, if the select board has a recommendation, it could make it from the floor of town meeting? I liked part of what you were saying, Melinda, and was wondering if that paragraph in itself isn't trying to do too much in what is essentially one sentence and needs to be possibly broken up into a couple of sentences for clarity to the members of the town meeting. So we could, if everybody's willing, approve what's here and then follow the path you were suggesting between now and then and propose an amendment if we came to agree with on one, if that makes sense.
Mr. Zulus, thoughts? Oh, you're muted.
But I would be happy with approving what's here on the article. But I think the recommend, I don't think there's any problem making that change in the recommendation to provide for, you know, I think, you know, so I would favor, I agree with the author on, you know, going forward with the article as written. But I, but I do think, you know, I do think the recommendation is clear and, and
Probably.
This is our intent. So, that's, that's my thought.
So, I'm, I still am curious.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Wells? No, no, go ahead.
So, so I agree with Michael. Nothing gets off. I think, I don't want to go make any changes at town meeting on the floor if we can get around it, because we're going to be right back in the same boat we were in two weeks ago. So I think if we can get this right, and if we can't get to it today, what's the drop dead timeline, Mr. Freitag, that we could?
We're way past.
We'll be on it?
Yep, like a week.
This is, this is going, Mr. Member Wells, sorry, excuse me, Madam Chair. Which this was supposed to be at the printer last Friday. They've extended it to tomorrow, so this, this is it. Warrant committee meets tonight, I believe.
Right. They leave on July 3 for vacation, so.
I hate to lose this opportunity, and especially the fact that we don't have an October. Then we're, you know, we're at the same argument next year. Year, you know, we don't, years are big chunks of time, as we know, and they go by too fast. I, I agree with Mr. Zulus. I'm almost inclined to stay with the idea of putting it open perens, closed perens, with the language in there. If you are, Michael, I'm, and I know Katie really wants to move this forward as well. I don't want to lose a year on.
Yes, Mr. Doyle?
I'll go along with that.
I will too, as long as Mr. Freitag, I believe, I'm getting confused about what he's working on at the moment. I believe it's the perens after the warrant, correct?
Right, I'm just, yes, I'm just looking it over again here. And I think that perhaps the simplest way to do this is to just leave the article alone as it's currently in the warrant. And in the recommendation, we will, we will add just that one additional line that says, "And any resident of the town who submits a written request to the town administrator to receive a paper copy." That's sufficient. That appears to me to be within the scope. So, what we talked about today was revising the article and then a revision in the first paragraph of the recommendation. I think it's clear to leave both of those out. Leave the article alone and the first paragraph of the recommendation alone. Because that recommendation in that first paragraph does say, "As set forth below." And then, "As set forth below" is a very specific addition, which is, "And any resident of the town who submits a written request to the town administrator to receive a paper copy." So, I think that that's, I think Mike Zulus has made the right recommendation here, which is to just have that one change in the recommendation. Leave the article alone as it appears in the warrant right now. Or is it, as it, so you've already voted to amend it. So what we want to do is go back to the article as it was originally included and leave the first paragraph of the recommendation alone. But just include that one revision in the second paragraph of the recommendation that allows for paper copies of the warrants to be requested for town meeting.
Very good. So I will entertain a motion outlining what I tried just.
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
I'll second it.
Mr. Zulus, you did, unmuted.
I mute myself too much now. Just to, just to, just to clarify, the motion is to include the article as drafted and the recommendation as amended, only including the amendment in the second paragraph of the recommendation.
Awesome. No further comments now. Okay, all those in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Wells? Mr. Wells?
Yes, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
There's a lot going on. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes. Very good, thank you. And now I will entertain a motion to close the warrant.
I'll make a motion to close the warrant, Madam Chair.
Second. All those in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes. And now I will entertain a motion to approve the July 28, 2020 special town meeting warrant.
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Second.
All those in favor, oh, any further discussion? All those in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Zulus?
Yes.
Collins, yes. Thank you very much. No one has brought to my attention any topics that I could not reasonably anticipate. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Madam Chair. Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Wells?
Yes.
Zulus?
Yes.
Yes, and thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Freitag. Thank you to our treasurer, Jim Calliffe. Thank you, Mr. Danny, and all the members, Mr. Rich, and Ms. Beatty.